This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
We'll call the panel. Catherine, Nash, welcome back.
Good to be here. Good to be here. Good to have you here. Good to meet you. We're here with some of our guests. We've been on the podcast, you know. We need to address this. We created, through this pandemic, our community and function. The patient was not able to come to the country. And we hope that they can resume their lives. Now, please guide the city council. This mayor administrators, the municipal committees, they continue their work. It's very important for us to be able to do this. Yes, I think it is. All our workers, please, your fire. Now, we ask you to return. Our safety, the diseases chamber. And all we need to do is to regulate them.
Amen.
Amen. Of the United States of America. Be very brave. One day, one day. A good God, sinful, liberty, and justice for all.
Our main roll call, please? Here. Here. Here.
Here.
What name is she saying?
Yeah.
Yes, you too.
Here.
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 Now, we have special congratulations, Peter.
These situations, these little crap like this. Um. Everybody talked that the city has a five-year worth nine first award. The city today has, um, done. Had been with us a five-year. He's, uh, one of our, uh, members of our, uh, as part of that new degree. The college is very important. Um, we will start our, now had some degree at some point or in his classes for that. So I'm working on the full degree for a certain virus. He recently was, our people, the city, a very arduous set of rest and certification class last summer. Uh, he did all that. He's, uh, two days, he married, he's like, uh, first. Getting married December of this year. And it's something that lobby, they go see about five more weeks in before he. That's a nice thought. When you get married, it's a big, so it works.
By what Andrew did.
Catherine, uh, don't get the paper, please. Come over here. Law paper? A pose?
Aye.
Is that a pose?
He's a little delayed.
He's late. Okay, uh, we have new roles tonight. Uh, Sheriff Morgan Megan Page is line S. Administrator from Kermit's Megan.
Yes, I have three items on the agenda tonight. My first item is a, um, records destruction from the, um, personnel department. They have identified some records that meet their retention requirements. And they are requesting authorization to, um, properly dispose of these records that they no longer need.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Law paper?
Aye.
Same sign? Make no. Right there.
What? Can I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so my second item is, um, part of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, um, also known as CARES. There are provisions that provide options for our deferred compensation program organized under section 427 of the Tax Code. These provisions are designed to provide additional relief to our participants in the plan that are dealing with financial hardships due to COVID-19 pandemic. And some of these provisions leave it up to the plan sponsor, sponsor, which is the city, to allow these temporary provisions or not. And these provisions are to allow longer loan maximums or larger loan maximums, loan repayment deferrals, early withdrawals, to cover COVID-19 related expenses, and to waive required minimum distributions for people that are over the seventy and a half, um, which would create a hardship due to the stock market disruptions. Adding these options has no financial impact to the city and adds minimal administrative burdens. So the staff recommends allowing these options for our employees that choose to participate. Um, also, the CARES Act allows that if we authorize these options, they can be implemented immediately and in some cases retroactively, and then followed up with, um, formally amending our plan as time permits. So staff recommends that council, um, authorize, um, them to make these options available um, to our participating employees immediately.
Um, Councilwoman Page, you, you can see them, but, uh, uh, we have, um, Brendan Hurley and Bob March here from, uh, IBG. They are our, um, um, third party administrators or, or agents to help us with, uh, Mass Mutual. So if anybody has any questions or if you guys have anything that we left out or, or want to add, um, they're certainly here. That's what they're here for is to answer questions, so.
The question, counsel?
We state everything right?
Mr. Morgan, Mr. Martin? Is it doing good?
Good.
Good. So read the ordinance, Arlene, please.
November twenty twenty eight seventy seven. City is preparing four fifty seven deferred compensation forms under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Security Care Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second reading.
Law paper?
Aye.
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 Senator, go ahead.
Twenty twenty eight seventy seven. And we're just offering temporary provisions to the city today. Four fifty seven deferred compensation forms under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Security Care Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. File that.
Second.
Roll call, please?
No.
Call him, though.
Crowe?
Yeah.
Rowe?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Yeah.
Holden?
Yes.
Yes.
And that?
Yes.
So that, okay, so you guys just want to add?
All right, my third item has to do with a, um, a fundraising event for Open Door, um, that is partnering with Craft Beer Cellar. And I believe Tim is here. Um, he's one of the organizers of the event to talk to us a little bit about that event.
Do you want to come forward? We'll get a microphone for you. We have a hot mic here, Joe. Do yourself, they have met with us.
This is Todd Hallow. I'm the director of development for all the different center. And the city on all the, the party coordinator for craft beer itself. Last year was our first event, fundraising for craft beer, as well as, uh, Open Door, that's a fun free event. We hope to do it this year as well, as, um, we keep the date on the twenty first of twenty seven. Uh, we plan on, right on, right on, that's right. We call it a holiday, um, every year. Um, after the first event, we try to listen to our patrons and figure out what we're best for, so kind of, um, if we go through the next five, we actually lose it back an hour. Uh, we did go from three and so eight. Last year, we were moved back to the one. So the, the, we spent a bit too long of a stretch throughout the middle of the day. Uh, so we addressed that issue. Um, we actually changed how we're going to have a layout due to the city, uh, doing the street. Um, however, yes, the fact that it's changed, uh, we'll go back to the original format. However, as of now, we hope to utilize the park and law process, our coffee, north of Phillips Center there. Uh, we still plan on going from Old Sage, I believe, to Loomine, and then right before, um, Subway, um, right before Salvation Army, where we'd like to have a blockade at. Um, last year, we had three hundred and seventy-five attendees. We're hoping to have five hundred and fifty-six hundred depending on city ordinance. Um, last year, we had twelve breweries, that included distilleries. Um, one of the things that we were asked, to look at more wine, uh, for significant others to come out and have a good time as well. So we have fourteen breweries, two distilleries, three wineries. Going to have three food trucks, uh, door and food. So we can talk about the way that open. Um, as of right now, we're doing about eighteen hundred families. Uh, the count total is three point four. That's how much family we're helping at the food pantry. We're serving roughly fifteen hundred hot meals that were our system. Uh, we have to space those numbers. Um, the last month, we had an additional one hundred and sixty-five new families, so. Some of the precautions that were not any better, but any better. Um, everybody will have a risk ban. Um, I talked with all of the vendors, um, that have dealt with the event to make sure that they're watching for bright colors, um, risk bans at the right color of time. Um, we will have off duty officers on hand. We will be having a station made ahead of time, um, as well as the day of all of our Open Door volunteers, which is mainly staff, and I'll leave me in our actual. Those are coffee as a black shirt company, um, do, you know, say over the extra hours to make sure you can either walk or coffee, or just, or designated drivers, uh, they claim something else this year as well. The first year that we have doing, um, the first year for dot minus percent, we're hoping to grow that as the event is larger. Um, the first year since we're pretty rural, um, as craft beer sellers, we invite vendors here. We had to spend a lot of money on beer. So I've already talked to the vendors. We're hoping by the third year, we can start cutting back portion here that we have to pay for when types of vendors we get here, so that portion can go back home. This just gives us a little bit of brief history about some of the stuff that we do that we know that already went over.
Counsel, any questions of ten?
Yeah.
Off glass, question?
How much money did they take last year?
For Open Door?
How, how much money did they clear out this year? A hundred?
Who's this? What, what, how much money did they raise last year?
How much, how much money did we raise last year? I don't know how much money we actually raised as far as the D C might. I know we gave back twenty-six hundred to Open Door after all. That doesn't include the money that was actually, that we, that we, that was just what CDC gave for Open Door. Um, this is one of the things that we're also doing. We're going to have central bank come out, since we work through them. That way, uh, we take your money and it goes right.
Any other questions?
I'm trying to remember. Then I'm pretty, uh, kind of making statements that I know what we're going to be doing. But I don't know.
Hello? Any questions from the council? Well, ladies, read, read the ordinance?
November twenty twenty seven eighty-eight. And we're just ready for requirement inspection four dash three eight. Open container laws, the code of order is this, today is three, and in public, other conditions related to the Open Door craft beer cellar, eight hundred and then, on Saturday, twenty seven, twenty twenty.
Second reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
November twenty twenty eight seventy-eight. And we're just ready for requirement inspection four dash three eight. Open container laws, the code of order is this, today is three, and in public, other conditions related to the Open Door craft beer cellar, eight hundred and then, on Saturday, twenty seven, twenty twenty. During the hours of four thousand nine hundred and then, now, now, today.
Final passage.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call, please?
Crowe?
Yeah.
Rowe?
Yes.
Page?
Seth.
Yeah.
Holden?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
And Low?
Yeah, thank you, for coming.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. Jeff Leavitt has a new hat today. Jeff, hope it works.
Hope it works. I've got three items for you this evening. First item being an FCC agreement for the water meters. Part of this, I think, is part of our housekeeping, it's the property water department, they're all clean. And this has to do, since our water meters are rated with radio frequency, that are part of the FCC, we need to change the ownership and give it to the city.
Any council questions?
Yeah, uh, with the.
This is Bob Ross. Question is, Bob?
Uh, with the mini meters, they put in last year. To look into a lot of problems with the doors. There, 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 there are.
I did not know of problems with these. This is.
And I think this is, the, this meter programs, I think that it goes back to twenty twelve, probably, when we installed these meters. I, we can certainly check into it, but I'm not aware of what.
And I am not either. This is the device that reaches the line of water that goes through the meter. Any other questions? Read the ordinance, please, Arlene.
November twenty twenty eight seventy-eight. The organization is ready to, that's the former judge, this was, one of the, and then, five times, this is today, but there are, and central, she has a, one of the, the, the spectrum.
Second reading.
Second.
Law paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Rowe? Rowe?
Yes.
Tolly.
Row, row, I don't know. But yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
And I, is, maybe supply facilities, and this, this is, and, but they grew up and have to do with the drinking or surfing process, or, you know, with the water division, and it just has to do with our water treatment or our filtration system. Thirteen of the, and I think there's weather out of the whole wall.
Any questions from council? Well, ladies, if you want.
November twenty twenty eight eighty-eight. And we're just, especially, in the environment and cities, ready to, and any of these parts of the city, And now the. This is the U S A. The, the, the. The, the. For the leaders. One hometown celebration. For four local sources during the city. The thirteen, that's.
Second reading. Second.
Lawfaver?
Aye.
Oppose?
November twenty twenty eight eighty. And order to do it in. Maybe these part of celebrate. And now the. Maybe this is the U S A. The, the. The purchase of thirteen. For the meters. One of the all. Celebration. For all of the sources during the city. And thirteen. That's the. Three of those.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Paige?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Low, is that? Row?
Yes.
Is ready?
Yes.
Number, the outside of Hannah, I should do the green for the big equipment companies. For a factory built. System for the waste water event. And this is part of a capital improvement. Under our life for this year. I did, uh, ask for the expert. But out in innovation for bid. Free business. CEO came back to us and the folks there. And his management, the local tax. Be paid for the.
Any questions from counsel?
November twenty twenty eight eighty one. Government. And maybe put a company incorporated. For the purchase of one. That bill. Coming to the public work. Which was.
Second reading.
Lawfaver? Aye. Oppose?
November twenty twenty eight eighty one. And order to do it in. And models. The city today. And maybe those companies incorporated. For the purchase of one. That bill coming to the public.
Five, five minutes.
Second.
Second.
Hold on.
Brendan?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nash?
Yes.
Low, is that? Row?
Yes.
Yes.
Tolly.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I felt like saying that a park is in a parent's area. Are there any recommendations for me for various boards and deployments?
As the city council. Because the new. A new employment for the. From history. Kevin, first. Four-year term. Starting June eighth of sixteen twenty-four. The remaining of these are all free. Citizen's charter. The boundary commission. By, 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 by. And these. And, and, and. That's why. Terms of three-year term. Starting June twenty twenty-three. Our board. Jerry Page, twenty-five-one. That's true. But all of us, twenty-four hundred thousand. Making final. On eighteen west third. Your three-year terms. Starting June twenty twenty-three. By the government commission. Now, with this. Twenty-six-three. Four-year term. Starting June twenty twenty-four. Police personnel. Or Jenna Henderson. Twenty-seven, two, three. So the body. Five-year terms. Starting June twenty-five. Other board. Chris Jaxton. Seventeen, eighteen circles. Four-year terms. Starting June twenty twenty-four. And the front. Committee. History. And. And, and, and. So much. Which I heard is our. Four fifteen forty-four.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
Lawfaver? Aye. Oppose? Oppose? I agree. Make a light.
This evening. Christian, I'm already against the case. General. For. Rest of the team. For package selected and Sunday sales. And by whole shell. And with the. Eighty-five thirteen. Was made. For package selected and Sunday sales. And rest of the. The. F W. And one. Motion to approve and block.
Second.
Lawfaver?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, now, with all the guys that listen on here. Counsel members? Let's. Any comments? Counsel?
I want to say, I want to say a big thank you and happy International Firefighters Day to Chief Harrell and the rest of our brave firefighters for the Seattle Fire Department.
Thank you, Jordan. I know they appreciate that. I hope you bathe them a great dinner tonight.
He didn't do it tonight, but he did it a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
No, I didn't want you to, you know, probably don't like that much. Any other comments from? Someone, would you like to say something?
I can hear him. I didn't know.
That, uh, this period of time, it's been, I've been in the restaurant business all my life. And this is probably the most difficult time to be defending the restaurant business. We, we made it. But I'm not. It starts to struggling and it's another four weeks. It's become, become more difficult. The, uh, fighting is now severed. Each day, we're having a difficult time getting products. Yesterday, we ordered for today. Our primary supplier was out of product completely. We had to go to a secondary. And we had a large amount that came in. So I just want everybody to understand how difficult that this is gonna be. For the restaurant. And, and most of food industry possibly. Anybody? We have a motion to adjourn. We have another one again?
Anybody from the audience?
Oh, yeah, I had. I forgot that. Anybody from the audience? Make a few comments. Anybody out there on the phone?
Very, 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 very. Thank you, motion to adjourn. For those that. For legal. State.
Second. Lawfaver? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, Tolly, before you leave, did you, did you get the, um, one for the, um, closed door, the, the link for the closed door?